Welcome to the May 9, 2023 meeting, special, or no, I'm sorry, regular meeting, regular work session of the McMinnville City Council. Tonight, I would like to start by calling on our Finance Director, Jennifer Cuellar, and Dan Blue from Recology to introduce our work session topic. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So we have three folks from Recology here with us this evening, so I'll say their names and titles, and then if you guys want to come up to the dais. We've got Dan Blue, he is brand spanking new, does not have a business card, and he's the new Recology Government Community Relations Manager. And then Ernie Martin, our Operations Manager, and Chris Carey, the General Manager of Recology. So they are joining us tonight to talk about what's been happening in their neck of the woods, and to discuss any of the issues that are pushing the request for a 4% rate increase for next year. You have a staff report from me going through the information, and it includes all of the documentation that Recology has given us. And from reviewing the ordinance, it does seem that the 4% rate increase does make sense to move forward for next year. But if you, if at the end of this work session, if there's more information that you guys need to make a decision, the resolution passing the new rates is scheduled on your business meeting, but we can pull it if you all in the discussion in the work session decide you need anything more, and we'll bring it forward in later in May or in June. So that's what I've got, and I will turn it over to our very good friends. I guess Chris is taking the lead here on the discussion. Thanks.
Nice, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay? Is this working? All right. Mayor and Council, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Chris Carey, I'm the General Manager for Recology Western Oregon. I'm here tonight with Ernie Martin, our Operations Manager, as Jennifer said. Ernie's responsibility is to run the site for our facilities here, so he's got the transfer station and the collection, but not the compost, which is right next door, so it could be a little confusing. Nick Oheiser runs our compost facility there, and also in Almsville and North Plains. And then to my right is Dan Blue, our new Government and Community Relations Manager. Dan has replaced Dave Larmouth. If you guys remember Dave, Dave has probably come in front of you this council for the last, I want to say, 20 years, and he's probably watching right now if we're on TV. So hi, Dave. So we'll get started. I want to give you sort of some written comments here, just a collections update. Our collection operations remained relatively unchanged this year. We do have some staffing announcements, and I'll go through some of those in the next bullet points. I just wanted to mention that in McMinnville itself, the collection crew that we have of drivers, on average, is 11 years tenure. That's really, really good. And you see that in terms of the customer service, because they know their routes, and they've been doing them for 11 years. But when you step back and look at six of the folks that are here, they're 20 to 30 years that are running these residential streets. George Humley, Randy Gammel, to mention a few. Matt Newby, right. Great guys, know this city, live in the area, big supporters. So shout out to you guys if you're watching, or if you see this. Let's see. We're looking at some grant opportunities for some support vehicles this year. Electric vehicles, not garbage trucks, they're not ready. We're doing some of those pilots in Seattle and in California, like two trucks, and those are in 200 vehicle operations, so we got to play with that, because it's a big lift for electric. So we're going to start with possibly a delivery truck, like a flatbed, and then even a support vehicle for like our waste zero specialists, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Another thing that we're doing is we're using R99 fuel. That's not a requirement, that's just what we do. We want to use the most greenhouse gas friendly fuel that we can. We've negotiated deals where we have it available for us, just at one of the pumps down the street, and we think, we've just been recently informed that the other fueling station across from us, so there's two of them, are going to be carrying R99 as well. So we're hoping that our work, our footprint, our usage has helped bring R99 to a more affordable range. I will tell you, it's really close to diesel for us right now, so it should be appealing to other fleet industries. All right. Customer service, we were down six folks this time last year. We're fully staffed now. We have some training to do, we still have some challenges. We've seen our hold times come down, but every once in a while we get a blip, but it has improved greatly, but still needs some work, so we're committed to making that improvement. See, oh, we also have, the office is open now for walk-up customers, it's been that way for a few months. So we've seen a lot of foot traffic, people wanting to come in and pay in person. So we have that, our window's staffed 100% of the time now. Let's see. I wanted to talk about some of the events that we support, there's quite a few, just to give you a heads up on what they are. The Yamhill County Household Hazardous Waste Cleanup, we donate in-kind service for that. McMinnville Wine and Food Classics benefiting St. James Catholic Church. Homeward Bound, we did a drop box to support their new shelter. Yamhill County Fairgrounds, we donated trash service for the fair. Lamont Valley Cancer Foundation, we did a sponsorship, Cruising McMinnville, McMinnville Swim Club, McMinnville Lions Christmas Tree Event, 2023 Bald Mountain Cleanup Event that's coming up. Then we did the Santa Parade and the Alien Days Parade, and we support the International Air Show at McMinnville, so much so that they asked us to put one of our garbage trucks in the middle of the airstrip so that they could, not airstrip, but the airfield, so they had a point of reference. So a Recology automated truck was sitting out there. Unbeknownst to me after the fact, I was a little worried about that, but, you know, free advertising, I guess. Some of the things that we're working on or would like to talk to you, we're not really working on them, but we would like to talk to you about them, in terms of how do we continue to divert waste from landfills. So one of the ways that we think is the most effective is a food waste prevention program. Food waste is a top priority material. It can be tackled most effectively and have the highest environmental economic benefits by avoiding food waste in the first place. That would take some time, so, you know, teaching people about post-consumer usage of food versus, you know, are you buying what you need versus not even touching it and then throwing it away. The secondary approach is getting food out of the landfill-bound waste stream. Currently, 30% of Oregon's landfill-bound waste is organic waste. So offering a food collection, or a food waste collection at the curb has proven to been a successful approach to getting the methane generating material out of the landfill and reduce the amount of garbage households throw away. If you guys are familiar, Portland has a program where they've turned it around, where garbage is every other week serviced, and yard debris is weekly, and recycling is weekly, and it's had huge impacts. I'm not saying we can do that right away, but it's something that if you guys are interested, we can certainly look at. We could provide this service, it would take some planning and coordination with the city, the county and the state initially, and this, I'm sorry, in the county and the state. Initially, we would reload the material potentially at the transfer station, and then take it to our North Plains facility, or our Almsville facility, which is permitted for what's called type 3 yard debris, which has food waste in it. You know, we could also talk about expanding the ability of the compost facility that we have right here to take food waste, but that would be something that we'd all have to coordinate and work on. I will tell you that if you add food waste, there's a concern about smell, but what, the way that we would add it is, we would put some technology behind it, negative air systems. Right now, it's just static, these are just piles that we turn. Once you put negative air on it, you control odor with a lot more, you have a lot more control over odor, and then, but it's a substantial investment, we'd need some space. Those are kinds of things that we'd have to work through, so I don't want everybody to get excited like we're going to put that in the backyard, we're not. But it's, we have lots of opportunities, if you guys are interested, we could talk through those. Another thing we're looking at are batteries, just the household batteries, potentially collecting those at the transfer station, we'd probably pilot that, see how it goes, see what the cost is, and if it has rate implications at the transfer station, we'd adjust. But right now, they're, the only batteries we're taking are car batteries, so there's something that we could pull the trigger on if you guys are interested. Let's see. We have some, we're also looking at filling our waste zero technical assistance position and to reinvigorate that work. We've had a waste zero person in the past that goes out and supports the community, schools, that kind of thing. We haven't had that role since COVID, so we've been working on backfilling that. But we could really leverage that, with some of Dan's knowledge from his prior work as a Director of Solid Waste and Recycling at Gresham, and the work he did at Metro, we feel like with a zero waste specialist, we could dig in even more. And that would be if a business wanted some help, we could go in and do an audit, we could do an evaluation and work with them on ways to reduce and reuse. That's another opportunity for us. All right, so I'm going to work my way into the rate review and talk to you a little bit about that. We're proposing a 4% rate increase tonight. Some of the drivers are just in general CPI, it's pegged at 5.5 in one index and 5.1 at another. What our drivers are for us is labor is up 10%. The biggest driver of that right now is our CBA, our Collective Bargaining Unit, or Agreement with our drivers, expired and we renegotiated in January. During that three-year period of time, those drivers were set increases. Well, what happened was with inflation in the economy, they weren't enough to keep up with the demand for drivers. And outside of unions, we saw some big market adjustments. So when they came back into January, they had some demands, as you can imagine. And so we negotiated with them in good faith, but, you know, it was a big step. And to be quite honest, we took those big steps with our open market, non-CBA drivers as well, because the market was demanding it, right? It was hard to find drivers. And I, I'd like to say we're fully staffed across all of our sites, and we're not, but we're so much closer. It feels like normal turnover versus COVID turnover. So a big chunk there. We've had some disposal impacts, Coffin Butte, where we take the disposal, raised rates 7.4%, they went from 35.59 to 38.23, so that's a nice chunk to cut into expenses. And then I'll tell you that just recycling processing, we don't even call it recycling revenue anymore, because the curbside is, it costs money to process. We don't, we don't see, we're not getting paid for it, we haven't been paid for it in years. It was as high as 118 bucks a ton, more than trash, last year. It's settling around 60 right now, so we're not projecting it to get as crazy. It feels like the markets are somewhat calming down. So that also has an impact on our rates. Other operational expenses are trucks, parts, computers, we've still seen a rise, we're starting to see that settle. I'll tell you that we ordered a truck two years ago, and we're supposed to see it at the end of this year. So we're going on three years for a garbage truck, and that's only one. So it's unbelievably frustrating. So we've had to reinvest in trucks that we otherwise probably would have mothballed, but we've got to keep them around, because we don't see any relief in sight in terms of getting new equipment. And then the last thing would be administrative expenses, staff wages as well. We added a second staff accountant. We were short going into last year, and we're fully staffed now, so that's great. There is some good story here, some good news. Fuel is down, we were paying close to six bucks a gallon, we're down to like 3.70, 3.80, and we're projecting that to stay fairly steady, so if you guys know any different, let me know. We'll ask for 5% if that's good. Let's see. So for us, we're asking for the 4%. So what does that mean for your ratepayers? We'll give you kind of a sample here, but you can see in our packet the rate implications of every rate service, but your most common is a 32-gallon weekly garbage and every other weekly, every other week recycling and every other week glass, and every other week yard debris. So you'll see an impact of $1.16 per month. The rate would go from 29.11 to 30.27. And that's all I have. If you have questions for us, we can take them.
I'm so sorry to be absent during your presentation. Counselors, questions?
I have a few questions, if I could.
Sure.
I understand that we're going through, the state of Oregon's going through a period of implementation for the Oregon Recycling Modernization Act, and that the timeline for jurisdictions to begin getting involved in this program will begin sometime in July of this year through 2024, mid-2024, I believe. What's the plan at Recology in terms of, will we be setting up a PRO? What's going to happen in the city in terms of this implementation?
So the PROs are set up by the MRFs, so those are the Material Recovery Facilities. We don't have one in Oregon, so we're not going to be working as a PRO or setting up. The impact that I think you're asking is, what would it have on the rates? We hope the impact will be that it stabilizes rates. So the producer responsibility is that they have to pay in to the PRO for their product ahead of time, and then that money gets distributed to the MRFs, the Material Recovery Facilities. I'm going high level, there's a lot more to it, but, and so, with the intent that it stabilizes the markets. So a MRF would not only get paid for the product that it ships out, if it can sell it, after it sorts it, they'd get some money from the PRO that's set up, which is from the producers. So the impact should be much better, because what we saw was 118 a ton to $16 a ton to getting paid maybe. That should, keep that steady. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, my assumption is it would do better than hold it steady, right? Because the producers are going to put in a lot of money to, to shift in cost allocation from consumers at the end
Yeah.
to the producers up front. And so I'm curious, like, how is that going to affect our rate structure here? Is this cart before the horse? Are we too soon to talk about that? It just feels like if we're doing a 4% rate increase for this year, I'd kind of like to know what we're looking at in year two and stuff, when these things start kicking in, will we see a reduction in rates for consumers, or, you said stabilize, and that's different than what I was expecting?
Well, the intent behind it is to stabilize the rates, right? That's, that was one of the intents behind RMA. So, but I don't see it happening quickly. There's still a long ways to go. Did you have something you wanted to add to it?
Sure. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mayor Dropkin, and Council Dan Blue, I'm with Recology Government and Community Relations Manager. So one example of an existing program that is similar to what would come out of RMA is the Oregon E-Cycles Program, where every time you buy an electronic device, you pay a fee. That fee then is used to set up essentially a drop-off program at many sites all over the state of Oregon, where, including, I think we have one at Recology here in McMinnville, where you can drop off a large TV, you can drop off, you know, a computer, peripherals, all the cables and the mice and everything that goes with it at no charge, and that's because it's funded through the fee that's on that electronic product. So my understanding is RMA would be similar to that program, where whatever materials are covered under the RMA should have that fee being collected at the front end, rather than being charged to the ratepayers at the back end.
Right, but the way that it was presented in the work groups was that, you know, that would then subsidize the cost of, say, recycling, for example. So, I mean, that's what I was just trying to get at, what are the cost ramifications? But it may be just we're too early for it, and if that's the case, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent is that it would go down, and then it would also stabilize it. But it's so early that I, you know, I'd hate to say that we're not going to be back here in front of you asking for a rate increase next year because of that, or not asking. I think it's too soon for that. There's some other factors within that. Like, right now, if we're asking for 4%, and that puts us at the bottom of our operating ratio, and in our franchise agreement, we can actually come in and ask for the target operating ratio, which is higher. We haven't done that in the last two years. Trying to understand the impacts of Riverbend landfill, and that, not just for McMinnville, but across the county services, because, you know, all of our trucks go out, pick up homes across the county, and so we try to allocate our expenses, so across for these rate increases. So it gets a little funky, but for the most part, I think it's a wait and see on the impacts of RMA.
You had referenced the hope for some, I understand you're not talking about garbage trucks, but the conversion to electric vehicles. You had mentioned grants, is that investment dependent on the grants, or that investment is because of this rate increase?
So, no, in terms of just trying to improve our footprint, right? Not just within rates, but how do we provide the city, hit some of their goals in terms of greenhouse gas emissions or diversion? That's one of the ways we would, we would look at. There's a lot of grant money out there right now to try to get trucks to go electric, but we think it's too soon to get heavy into electric garbage trucks, because they're not efficient.
Yeah, I follow the logic on the garbage truck.
Yeah.
Just sort of the supplemental
Yes, we want to try that out, and we think this is a great city for us to try those grants, and those would be DEQ grants or state
If you aren't successful in the grants, you won't make that investment.
No, that's possibly, I mean, we, those grants typically are, will give you 50%, and you pay the other 50%. But with Recology's, you know, our mission is, we're looking at that anyway.
Okay. You had also mentioned, so is the, onboarding the residential battery recycling program included in this rate increase, and your guys'?
No, because the transfer station's separate from this increase, this is for the collection company, but we wanted you to understand that we're looking at it collectively as a whole. So it may not have an impact here, because we're not picking it up with the route trucks, but eventually, we could figure out a way to do that, but we would start with, how do we receive them at the transfer station?
Okay. And then same, similar question, I think I usually ask when you guys are in front of us about this, but is it in the calculus, or in, if so, where to begin looking at construction, recycling?
Yeah, the only way that I think we can do that is to expand the footprint of the transfer station, and that is a heavy lift. So it's not in this next year's plan, and it's probably not in the following year's. My hope is to spend some money in this coming year, this, our next fiscal year, to put some engineering and design money in, to take a look at what that looks like, because we do need the space to do that. We have outdoor, but there's DEQ requirements, and once we receive it, it has to be covered.
And then, if you'll permit the follow-up question, how do you, and I get that it bumps up against the fringeier elements of having a franchise, but how do you allow for that service to be offered and delivered to the city citizens while you not providing it, but holding the franchise? Does that question make sense? So I know there are other providers. If someone wants to remodel a house, and they want to recycle the construction waste as best as they can, there are other providers outside of the city limits that can come and take that and do that.
Yep.
And so I know that is in conflict, but it is a different service in a way than what you guys are unable to offer. So how do you, how do or could you handle that while you guys look at propping that program up?
So the way that it's handled now is that most you'll see will collect it separated, like we have a wood load, or we have a sheeprock load, and they'll take it to those facilities. If you have a mixed load, then they're probably driving all the way to Hillsborough or somewhere, and there's an added cost. We could, we could do that and take it to Hillsborough. We can't do that and take it to our facility, because we don't have the space to sort it. So there is a way to offer it, just not at our transfer station. We, you know, the way that we do it now is we take metal clean, like we'll go give you a drop box for metal at a job site, you have to have the space for the drop box, right? We can bring you a wood box, and you can put clean wood in there. Wood's even tougher now, it has to be really clean in order for us to get it to the mills, because the hog fuel requirements are much tighter than they used to be. So we can do a source separated, but we, once you mix it in a box, it's tough for us unless we take it to another facility, which a resident can request us to do that.
Oh, okay.
It's just going to be an added cost, because we'll add miles to it.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you for presenting. When I got the joy of doing the last tour, there was some conversation of, I think it was ESA student that was trying to create a Styrofoam crunching device?
Yeah, so
I'm curious where we are on that.
There's, Ernie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been a couple iterations of the chomping machine. It worked, it didn't work, and then I think it went back to the school, and it's still there around, right?
And we are still supporting that project.
So we still haven't, we haven't reached conclusion on that?
We haven't seen the evolution to its final state.
Please make sure that I'm on the email list when that reaches conclusion, because, you know, while my counterpart is a construction guy, I'm an IT guy, and I get tons of Styrofoam, so breaking it up by hand is a joy.
Yeah, when I go, I do my site walks, I'll see the guys who are breaking Styrofoam even more, and I'm like, what are we doing? Where's the chopper? I need to see it. But it made a short appearance, short-lived appearance, and then it's refining.
All right, we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, I think it's a whole, a whole nother group of students working on it at this point.
Thank you. And Council President Garvin, do you have any questions?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Any additional questions for us before we go?
Councilman Menke's on the phone.
Oh, Councilman Menke joined, wonderful. I'm sorry, Councilman Menke, I thought you weren't going to be here for the work session. Councilman Menke, any questions from you?
No, I have none at this time. Interesting conversation, though, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So just questions for you, what are our next steps? We're in a work session, so I don't, do we come back? Are you guys addressing this tonight, or is it another?
I think, is this in the packet later tonight?
It's on the packet, available for decision-making tonight, so.
Yeah, so you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, and then, and then we'll deliberate and make a decision later this evening.
Okay. So you would like us to stay? Is that correct?
I think that it's always a great idea. It's wonderful when we have the opportunity to have a conversation, and other questions may come up for counselors in the interim that haven't come up during your presentation. So I would invite you to stay, or you could go home and zoom in, that would be another option, if you have dinner waiting or something of that nature, and you don't want to stay in council chambers. But I would encourage to have a representative here
Yes.
when we, when we're at the point of the vote.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I wasn't sure about next steps. All right, thank you guys so much for your time, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much for your time. Good evening, nice to see all your lovely faces. We are adjourning our work session at 6:45 PM, and we will be starting our regularly-called council meeting at 7 o'clock PM. The meeting is noticed for that time, so why not just start early? We can't, we have to wait. So we will, we will wait 15 minutes and then start on time. Thank you so much.
Glad to leave.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one vision, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service to the city of McMinnville and our residents, and those beyond our limits as well. Before we start, before we start the meeting or before we get into our agenda for the evening, I want to share something with the community. Within the last two hours, I was notified of a technical mapping error resulting in 250 residents being excluded from the new McMinnville Fire District that would be established through Measure 36227. The city is working collaboratively with the state and county to identify technical fixes to this error. And impacted residences will experience no interruption in emergency services regardless of whether the measure passes or not. The map that was submitted to the Department of Revenue to reflect the tax base of the new district included a discrepancy in properties that were intended to be included. The properties are in the northwest area of the current McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District outside of McMinnville city limits. The map that was included in the voters' pamphlet statement and the explanatory statement in the voters' pamphlet statement were intended to be included and, and described the properties that were intended to be included. Oregon state statutes do not provide direction on this specific issue. The city is working collaboratively with Yamhill County, the Oregon Department of Revenue, and the Oregon Secretary of State's office to find a resolution. The city of McMinnville is committed to continuing providing fire service to these rural residents regardless of the direction we receive from the state regarding the election itself. Additionally, the Board of Commissioners has just called a special meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM to discuss. It will be Zoom-only, and I have copies of, I have copies of the unedited version of this statement for members of the council, if you would like. Thank you. We'll now go into our proclamations. We have two proclamations that we'll be reading tonight. Additionally, we will be, at this time next year, including two additional proclamations for this month for Asian American Heritage and Pacific Islanders Month. And I would just wanted to take a moment to recognize, to recognize those this evening as well, even though we do not have a proclamation for them specifically. And so, our first proclamation this evening is for National Economic Development Week. Whereas McMinnville is fortunate to have four economic development organizations that partner with the city to ensure our community continues to thrive, this group is colloquially known as the Stable Table and works collaboratively to help ensure the economic growth and diversity of our community. This group is comprised of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, McMinnville Downtown Association, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, and Visit McMinnville. And whereas each organization provides a unique perspective representative of a constituency important to the growth and future of our community, and whereas McMinnville's economic vitality leaders promote economic well-being and quality of life for this community by attracting, retaining, and expanding high-quality jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic development partners attract and retain a diversity of businesses which create a vibrant community and improves the quality of life in the region. And whereas McMinnville aspires to accelerate, accelerate, and incubate entrepreneurism and innovation to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of a healthy economy. And whereas these partners do everything they can to support our local businesses, helping them through the hurdles of startups, nurturing their growth, and celebrating their longevity. And whereas these partners provide leadership and excellence in economic development for this community, their respective membership base and partner through opportunities, networking, training courses, is for National Economic Development Week. Whereas McMinnville is fortunate to have four economic development organizations that partner with the city to ensure our community continues to thrive, this group is colloquially known as the Stable Table and works collaboratively to help ensure the economic growth and diversity of our community. This group is comprised of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, McMinnville Downtown Association, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, and Visit McMinnville. And whereas each organization provides a unique perspective representative of a constituency important to the growth and future of our community, and whereas McMinnville's economic vitality leaders promote economic well-being and quality of life for this community by attracting, retaining, and expanding high-quality jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base; and whereas economic development partners attract and retain diversity of businesses which create a vibrant community and improves the quality of life in the region; and whereas McMinnville aspires to accelerate and incubate entrepreneurism and innovation to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of a healthy economy; and whereas these partners do everything they can to support our local businesses, helping them through the hurdles of startups, nurturing their growth, and celebrating their longevity; and whereas these partners provide leadership and excellence in economic development for this community, their respective membership base and partner through opportunities, networking, training courses, advisory services and research, publications, marketing, public policy advocacy and initiatives, as well as execute the vision for the strategic plan for the economic vitality of the city outlined in MAC-TOWN 2032; and whereas these partners are focused on accelerating the growth in family wage jobs, maintaining McMinnville's positive business climate, expanding talent and attraction efforts, being a leader in hospitality and place-based tourism, and improve infrastructure to better serve local businesses, visitors, and residents; and whereas our economic vitality partners work in the city of McMinnville and within the state of Oregon, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim May 8th through 12th, 2023 as National Economic Development Week in the city of McMinnville, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving quality of life. I also invite all to visit www.iedconline.org/edw to learn more about Economic Development Week. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this ninth day of May 2023. And next, we have our proclamation for National Police Week. And as you've already seen, we have members of our police department here with us this evening. Thank you so much for being here and being here for this proclamation. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week; and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of McMinnville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of McMinnville; and whereas it is important that all community members know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression; and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of McMinnville unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do proclaim May 14th to 20th, 2023 to be National Police Week, and call upon all McMinnville community members to observe the week of May 14th to the 20th, 2023 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who, by their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable reputation for preserving the rights and security of all community members. I further call upon the McMinnville community members to observe May 15th, 2023 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this ninth day of May 2023. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again for your service. We'll now have public comment. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Announced comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak and you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature, and once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, and we will announce you. Claudia, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, we'll start with Deanne Rosansky.
You come up here, good evening and welcome. And we do have the timer on Zoom, so there will be a timer on Zoom that will show you your three minutes so you can kind of track your own time. And just please remember to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deanne Rosansky, 28745 Southeast WK Anderson Road. Excuse me, that's my aunt's address. We'll let her know, too. 2894 Northeast Cole Avenue in McMinnville. Anything else I need to?
No, please.
So, thank you, Mayor Drabkin and City Council, for this opportunity to talk to you. My family has been a longtime user of the McMinnville swim pool, and we've enjoyed it. Recently, I read a public notice at the pool, and I was amazed to read that it says, "We invite you to use the locker room that best fits your gender identity." In this statement, we are giving all men the privilege of using the women's locker room. Can you picture this? What implications does this have to the children and women using the locker room? Who has suggested that this is suddenly right? Who has given men the privilege that infringes on the safety and well-being of the women and children? I am calling us back to what is right for the general public of McMinnville, and that is that men in the men's dressing rooms and women in the women's dressing rooms. I am asking that the policy be changed to have public safety above the policy of inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else? We'll ask that the gallery please refrain from applause and booing as we go through. Thank you. Anyone else signed up for public comment?
Yes. I'm going to butcher the last name because I can't read the spelling, so Amanda Powanka.
Welcome, welcome back.
Yeah, right.
I'll remind you to please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Hi, I'm Amanda Powanka. My address is, oh my gosh, 2501 Northeast Evans Street, Apartment I-333, McMinnville, Oregon, 97128. I was encouraged to say what I'm about to say by a couple people, and that is, I have been totally blessed by one of your guys' things that you did, which was put a cap on Airbnbs. I personally have been, I got to finally rent a house, and this house was slated to be an Airbnb. And I'm now living in a home where my three kids are able to, I'm in the process of moving, my three kids are able to walk to school next year. All three of them are going to different schools. Oh my word! And they're all able to walk to school because of this house. It's an absolute blessing, and I just wanted to say thank you for passing that. I know, especially when you're dealing with other people's property and making, you know, rules about it, that can be extremely difficult. My grandpa was a victim, victim of that. So, I know from personal experience, that can be really difficult. But being the recipient of now I'm able to rent and pay out the nose, it's not that I'm not paying for it, but I'm really, really grateful, and so are my kids. They absolutely love the house, and we love our landlord. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much for your time. Do we have anyone else signed up?
No one has signed up, no one else.
Okay. Would anybody in the gallery like to testify before the city council this evening? Right? Would anyone on Zoom like to testify before the city council this evening? Thank you for your comments. Tonight, we'll be holding a public hearing to consider ordinance number 5132 and ordinance approving a zone map amendment to apply the flood area zone FP to 28.25 acres and the 9,000 minimum lot size residential zone R1 to 1.65 acres and tax lots R442100901200 upon annexation into the city limits, and regarding ordinance number 5133 and ordinance annexing to the city of McMinnville tax lots R442100900 and R442101200. I will just say that if any counselors haven't been through an annexation process and find themselves with questions during the procedure or after, then please do go ahead and make that known and ask staff those questions or direct those questions at me to direct to staff. We want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable with the process for annexing property into the city of McMinnville. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the applicant will be asked to present their case. Then, the public will be asked to provide testimony, starting with those who support the application and then those who oppose the application. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to, in advance, to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then, I will ask if anyone present at the civic hall would like to testify, and then I will ask anyone who's on Zoom who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After people testify, counselors may pose questions to the mayor to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff or for clarity on any information that was conveyed in the testimony. The applicant is then given time to respond to and/or rebut any evidence presented. Once the city council has allowed all the procedural rights to the parties, and once the city council is satisfied, it has all the evidence it needs to render a decision. The city council will then close the public hearing. We will deliberate and announce the decision when we consider the action for approval of the ordinances later in the agenda tonight. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone said, has said, they've said it before you, and you want to ensure you have legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. We ask that you keep your comments succinct and relevant to the criterion for which the application needs to be reviewed. Those criteria can be found in the staff report, which was available before tonight's meeting. Public testimony will be limited to three persons, three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is a one minute remaining. Since this is a legal process for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and address for the public record so that you can receive written notice of the city council's final decision. Also, remember that the failure to raise an issue with statements or evidence sufficient to allow us to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal on that issue. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this meeting? Does any city counselor wish to make any disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this application? Does any city counselor need to declare any contact prior to this hearing with the applicant or any other party involved in this hearing or any other source of information regarding the subject of this hearing? Will our community development director, Heather Richards, please give a staff report on both ordinance number 5132 and number 5133?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and counselors. This is a public hearing for two ordinances. One will be a zone map amendment, and the other ordinance will be for the annexation of these properties into the city. The ordinances will come later in your agenda for your final decision. Ordinance number 5132 is the ordinance that approves a zone map amendment and also adopts the decision document with findings and conditions of approval for that land use decision. And then ordinance number 5133 annexes the two tax lots into the city limits of the city of McMinnville. The two lots we're talking about bookend each and are on each side of the Yamhill Bridge for Three Mile Lane as it comes over into the city center. As you, I don't know if you can see my pointer, but most of the lots are in flood plain, so blue is our flood plain, and yellow is our residential comprehensive plan designation. So, you'll see most of both of these lots are in the flood plain with a limited amount of area that's in our residential comprehensive plan map designation. Here's a better view of the two sites that would come into the city of McMinnville, showing the flood plain transitional zone that's currently in the county with this and the EF80 zone. The reason they want to annex into the city is they are interested in building a residence on this property, and in the EF80 zone within Yamhill County, they are not able to do so. This is property that's in our urban growth boundary and is meant to come into the city for annexation. The zone map amendment, when they come in, will apply 20, it will apply our flood area zone to 28.25 acres of these two properties, and then 1.65 acres will be in what we call our R1 zone, which is our 9,000 minimum lot zone for residential development. In terms of the annexation process, if you recall, we changed this a couple of years ago when the state ruled that cities can no longer rely on a vote of the electorate for annexations. And so, with that change, we went into a process where we had several different milestones to meet to annex into the city. Depending on the type of property, it would need to go through an area plan. If it's in the urban holding zone, urban holding comprehensive plan designation, these properties are not. They're in our flood plain designation as well as our residential comprehensive plan designation, so they do not have to go through that process. They do need to apply for the annexation and provide the necessary backup materials. They needed to enter into an annexation agreement with the city council, and then they needed to go through a land use process, including a conceptual master plan for the property, which we'll talk a little bit about. And then the final action is the ordinance that's in front of you this evening. On June 28th, they submitted their application for annexation. We reviewed that internally as a leadership team. This is the first annexation in many years for the city of McMinnville, so we were working through the process of how to, how to bring this property through our new process and review it for this annexation recommendation to you as the city council. They then came to you and entered into an annexation agreement via Resolution Number 2023-09. They then went through a concept master plan process that they provided to the city, and they've been working through their zone change, zone map amendment process as well. There was a public hearing at the Planning Commission on March 16th. The Planning Commission voted to recommend the zone map amendment to you, the city council, and you're having that consideration as a public hearing tonight. The annexation agreement is negotiated on a case-by-case basis with each property owner, and it's considered a contract between the property owners and the city. So, we went through that process. We talked about how we felt So, that was part of the annexation agreement with the property owners that when the city was in a position where they were moving that forward, the property would be dedicated to the city for free, the land for that trail, and that has been recorded on the property. In terms of the zone map amendment, this does not become official until the property actually annexes into the city. That's a condition of approval for the land use decision. The criteria for reviewing it is against Oregon land use goals, against the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan and the McMinnville Municipal Code, Section 17.74.020. The applicant provided a burden of proof for compliance with all of those regulatory authorities and then city staff concurred with their findings and the Planning Commission concurred as well and are recommending that to you tonight. The condition of approval on the land use decision is that this land use approval will not be in effect until the subject site is annexed into the McMinnville city limits, at which time these zones will be applied to the site. So, the ordinance number 5133 authorizes the city recorder to do a couple of different things that she needs to do in terms of sending the, the legal description and the site map and the petition to annex to several different regulatory authorities, Yamhill County and the state. And then, once those are accepted, this will go into effect. We did receive one testimony. It was from the Fair Housing Council and Housing Land Advocates. They're supportive of this. They'd like to see more housing in the city. The Planning Commission hosted their public hearing on March 16th and based on that, they made a recommendation to approve with conditions, a zone map amendment to the City Council. And with that, are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? Anyone on the dais? No? Any councilors on Zoom have any questions?
No.
Okay, Councilor Menke, thank you. Would the applicant like to provide any testimony?
Good evening, City Councilors. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, for the record, my name is Steve K. with Cascadia Planning and Development Services and I'm representing the applicant. And my address is P.O. Box 1920, Silverton, Oregon 97381. Just a few short words here. We, we reviewed the staff report and as you saw tonight, this property parallels the Yamhill River and is encumbered by a 100-year flood plain and a conservation easement which runs along the waterway. Really, only an acre of the site is available for development and due to the narrow configuration of the buildable area on the property, the applicant does intend to only build one home on the site. The concept plan that was submitted with our application shows how that single family can be cited and can be supported by public water, electrical and communication services within the AMI lane. The applicant has been working with the city towards your review tonight for quite a while. We appreciate all the help that we receive from staff. We concur with the staff report findings and we, you know, feel that this report details how the annexation and the zone change criteria have been met. So, with that, we thank you for your consideration this evening. I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Does any counselor have any questions of the applicant at this time? Right, thank you so much. We'll now start to hear public testimony. Our role is to listen to the public testimony and to ask clarifying questions when appropriate. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We will start with anyone who signed up in advance. Has anyone signed up in advance, Claudia?
No, not with me or Heather.
Okay. Great. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to provide public testimony at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public testimony on this application? Okay. And is there anyone on the phone? No, not at all. Okay, great. Does the City Council wish to continue or close this public hearing? There are three options available to us. One is to continue the public hearing to a future date. Two is to close the public hearing but keep the public record open for people to submit additional or any written testimony to a future date. And three is to close the public hearing and the public record.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and the public record.
Second.
Excellent. I have some consensus. Yeah, wonderful. I will now close the public hearing and we will be voting on the ordinance associated with this public hearing later in the agenda. We'll now go to advice and information items, starting with reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. Counselor Peralta, would you like to begin?
Yeah, Mayor, just a brief report. Our council of governments has been working with the state legislature and our lobbyists to get funding for economic development in the region and statewide. And it is looking good if the legislative, if the Senate decides to meet again. But we have $5 million in allocation statewide, of which 250,000 would come to this district for planning services, so let's hope that the legislature meets, but that's on track to, to pass. It's passed in, in the House and is, I think, going to get jammed up in the Senate.
Thank you, Counsel Gary.
Thank you. The DEIAC meets this Thursday, so we're between meetings. No MIRAC meeting. It's happened. The McMinnville Community Task Force liaison actually met today. I was able to attend. Most of the time was dedicated to hearing from County Mental Health Behavioral Health Director Jason Henness and he gave a good presentation on, on what they do and don't do and it was able to answer some questions from the group. And he provided a, a good update on the 988 statewide crisis hotline and what that does for folks in the area and then an update on the mobile crisis teams moved to 12 staff and 24-hour service and hopefully that will come along before too long. So, that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chenoweth?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Menke?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Council President Garvin?
Airport Commission meets next Monday in this building. If anybody wants to attend, that should be available via Zoom and in person. Fire Districting, we handed out, oh, I don't know, 4,000 informational pieces with walk-in drops this last weekend between two days. Thank you for all the community volunteers that came out for that, as well as firefighters from other districts. And yeah, tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., we have a meeting with the County Commission to work through that. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for showing up tonight.
Thank you. We have two new committee assignments and Counselor Peralta will be joining the Yamhill County Emergency Council and Counselor Payne will be joining the Yamhill County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. So, those meetings will be getting going soon. We also have had an opportunity to spend some additional time at the legislature, working on our asks for Third Street Improvement Project and our housing and homelessness response. Counselor Chenoweth, Council President Garvin and I went to the Capitol maybe two weeks ago and had continued meetings there. Were able to get letters of, a letter of support from Senator Kim Thatcher and just generally make some good progress. And then, following that, I was able to testify in front of Ways and Means, asking again for those funds and that the legislature remember McMinnville as they're divvying up their pots of money. And Council President Garvin also was available to testify and spent two and a half hours on Zoom, which I greatly thank him for his time, even though they did not get to him. We also held Planning Commission interviews over the last two weeks. In addition, I was able to sit at a round table hosted by the Children's Institute, who has a mission of expanding childcare facilities throughout the state. I asked if I could also invite our YCCO to sit at that table, since they work so much in the realm of childcare and that invitation was extended. So, we had some good county representation and I believe we'll be having an opportunity to host the executive director. They believe they're going to have about $100 million to put into childcare facilities in the state of Oregon next year. And we know that Yamhill County needs some of those additional facilities as well, so happy to be starting those conversations. And then, on Thursday, I'll be hosting Director Andrea Bell, who's the Executive Director of Oregon Housing and Community Services in City McMinnville, showing off some of our collaborative projects, the Navigation Center, Stratus Village, or the Stratus Village site, before going back to the Community Development Center and having a round table with some of our housing providers and some of those providers that specifically operate using Oregon Housing and Community Services funds. So, very happy to be hosting on those days. Department heads, City Manager Towery.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A couple of brief items tonight. You're well into your third of six or seven public meetings in 18 days. Congratulations. Continue to stretch and stay hydrated. Next week, we have budget committee meetings scheduled for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday as needed from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. in this room. Also, we'll mention a couple of you have had contact with Municipal Court Judge Arnold Poole and we will be scheduling a work session or presentation to the council on the current status of municipal court sometime later this summer, so you get to hear from Judge Poole and part of the municipal court team. That's all I have to report tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Interim City Attorney, Mr. Gowell?
Yes, Mayor. This month's activities have primarily focused on reviewing various contracts and intergovernmental agreements, several of which are on your agenda tonight for approval. And, and I want to thank staff for their, their excellent willingness to, to interact with our office in the review of these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Finance Director Quayar?
Nothing to report this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Muir?
Hello, Mayor and Council. We have called out an item titled Administrative Parking Policy in Parks. You received a technical memo in your packet and we wanted to call this out to start the notification process for a change in an administrative policy that will impact our parks and those who park in our parks. I included a few pictures and photos in the technical memo that I prepared for you. You can see that we've had some conflicts with oversized vehicles and trailers not fitting into parking spots and not being able to allow traffic to maneuver around them. And as such, we believe in our code, we have the authority to limit who can park in our park, parking lots. And so, beginning June 1st, we will no longer allow RVs, trailers or any towed vehicles to park in our parks. We've begun the notification process for the community in that. It went out in the city newsletter today. We are putting, going to be putting signs out at the parks, giving people plenty of notice that this change is coming. And the police department will also be helping us with notification of folks in our community. So, we're just taking the opportunity to call that out since that will be a change for people in the community, no matter what type of extra vehicle or towed vehicle you bring to our parks. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Sure. We don't typically, but do any councilors have questions regarding the specific agenda topic or topic? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Koster, welcome. Excellent. Thank you. Public Works Director Anne Pagano?
For tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Scales?
Yes, I haven't been in attendance for a couple. Thanks.
We're going to forgive you.
Break out all the list, right?
Yeah. There were excused absences.
PD's been pretty active. Actually, today, we were able to swear in a new recruit, Jeff Huey. He's on board now. He'll be headed to the academy in a month. Pretty cool story about Jeff. He comes from the private industry. You know that DPSST has a tremendous five, six-month backlog before they can even get them in the academy. Jeff chose to voluntarily attend some reserve academy training, so he's got a little bit ahead of the curve. So, kudos to Jeff for taking it upon himself to be educated prior to being sworn in. If you follow our social media pages, I'd encourage you to find out or learn more and so you don't have to listen to me ramble. Tucker, our canine, narcotics canine, was recently certified to detect fentanyl. Canine Storm and Mako, the two new canines, they're on the road deployed and they are working with their handlers. Our drone program that you guys funded last year, that's successfully been, we've had this, a number of successful deployments with the drone. And our program manager, Scott Fessers, has done a tremendous job of making sure that our, our pilots, as they're called, are taking the required courses and getting certified. MPD was reaccredited at the March OACP Annual Conference. Reaccreditation is just a affirmation, a reaffirmation that we are doing things the right way under best practice. Very excited that our LiveScan machine, they've got a grant for 90% of a LiveScan machine. This talks to OSP. We've got electronic fingerprints being submitted now, straight to OSP versus the ink prints that we used to do. We were probably about 30 years behind the curve there. And lastly, I wanted to say that I have entered into my position as President of the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police. It's, it's been. I didn't do, I didn't mention that to be clapped, but thank you. But I wanted to give a particular thank you to the executive team and most importantly, Mr. Towery and our staff that have supported me in taking on this additional responsibility throughout the state. It's a, it's a, it's a great responsibility, like Peter Parker says, so. I'm excited for this upcoming year, but that's all I've got. Thank you. And I would also refer you to continue to look at the weekly reports from Officer Height about the good work that he's doing within our community. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you and congratulations and the city is honored to have you in that role. Thank you so much. Community Development Director Richards?
Thank you. I wanted to share with you a couple of things. Our co-compliance team has put together a summer splash and scrub program. It's actually getting great response. It's a program inviting volunteers to help us with graffiti removal around the community. We're going to put together several events and it's a two-hour commitment and nothing's more gratifying than seeing immediately clean up on these properties. So, encourage people to contact our co-compliance crew if you want to participate in this. We have eight service groups have already signed up for it, so we're very excited about that. Also, wanted to let you know, we got out the Gwendolyn Hotel decision today. It was due today. And so, we spent, you made a decision yesterday adopting the ordinance. We then went through the process of putting that all together and getting it out and we sent it out just before coming here. So, made our deadline, so thank you for that. And then, lastly, I'm going to be going on vacation tomorrow for three weeks. Tom Shower is going to be serving in the interim as our planning director. If people have any questions about planning, please direct them to him. And my team is excited to sort of prop up all the programs, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Can you tell us what the appeals deadline is on that?
Yeah, it's 21 days, so appeal needs to be made by May 30th.
Okay, great. And then, do you also want to, if you don't mind, I know you're not an attorney, but any advice for the council on how to conduct ourselves going forward in the, in the next 21 days? Because people are itching to. in the, in the next 21 days? Because people are itching to talk about it.
Interestingly, we do have our attorney on the line. He can answer that. I would advise you the same way I've advised all the decision-making bodies associated with this particular project is until the appeal process is over, we're still in sort of a public process, and we should be conducting ourselves as we have up until this point.
And I would echo, I would echo what Heather said. Your decision is final unless someone's appeals. So to the extent you do make statements, they can come back and be possibly used against you if, if Luba were, or the Court of Appeals were to remand it. So the easiest course would be to hold off until we know definitively that it is complete. So until 21 days is over.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna expand on that question a little more, just because while we were sitting here, an email came up when the subject was Gwendolyn fate. So as we get emails of that nature, do you suggest that we continue to forward them? Don't read them, do read them?
So if you read the, regardless forward them, if you read them, they will have to be disclosed as ex parte contacts, should it come back to you?
In addition to any conversation that councilors may have if the decision is appealed and if it were returned to us?
Right. You'd have to disclose the substance of them. There's nothing illegal about an ex parte contact. You just need to disclose the substance to make sure that the parties can rebut them.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both for the additional clarity on that.
Yeah. And just to let you know, Tom and I have set up a communication. So we will let you all know if appeal comes in on May 30 for the project.
Or before.
Or before, yes.
Great. To our City Recorder, Claudia Cisneros.
I want to remind everyone about the Community Fair at the Mayor State of the City Address. We are two weeks away from that event that will be held right outside the plaza, Thursday, May 25. The Community Fair will start from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and then State of the City Address, hosted by the mayor, will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And hope to see you all there.
I second. There's been a tremendous planning effort from members of our staff. It's a unique event that we're doing this year. We'll have Civic Hall open inside, as well as some of our interact, more interactive vehicles, et cetera, outside, like the Bookmobile, a fire truck. And McMinnville Water and Light is bringing their demo truck where they can cook a hot dog on a live wire. Parks and Rec will be here. We'll have different departments set up inside and a great opportunity to interact. Should be fun and festive. It crosses over with the end timing of farmers market, so we're hoping there'll be a lot of folks down here. The State of the City will be outside, as Claudia said, on the steps. We'll have Spanish language translation. And then inside, it'll be broadcast with a reader board for anybody that's hearing impaired or may need to, to have a visual assist. And then we'll also be awarding the Oregon Mayor's Competition, If I Were Mayor Award, the competition we did in partnership with the McMinnville School District, so that, that kid will get recognized, which is pretty great. And the Mayor's Awards, which this year were derived from a community effort. We had citywide nominations open the whole month of February for the categories. And so the citizens have selected those who will be receiving those awards this year. So we'll be presenting those as well. So I'm not meaning to repeat what you said. I'm just really excited. I want to underline it because, you know, I want folks to come. I don't know if I should talk about the mascots or the cookies, but I'll leave that for later. You'll have to come to find out. Okay. And so with that, has everyone had, or do you have any department heads on Zoom? That aren't in the room? No. Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the cash and investment report from January 2023? And does anyone have any questions, I guess, more importantly? Okay. And we'll now go to our consent agenda. Does any councillor request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard, heard later? Okay. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councillor Geary and a second from Councillor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed signify by saying nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-21, a resolution approving the award of a construction project to JW Fowler, Inc. for the solids treatment capacity improvements project, Project Number 2019-10, and authorizing a construction contingency. I will now call on our wastewater manager, Leland Koster, to present.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So this evening, from your staff report, you will see that we are looking to award JW Fowler a contract for the construction of our solids treatment, the improvement project. This project started out in 2019, and so it's been a very long drawn-out process due to COVID, was part of the issues and staffing issues over the years. So it started out as going to be a 1 million gallon storage tank. And through this process, it was determined that if we built that million gallon storage tank, it may end up being an asset that would go to waste and we would not use in the future. So rather than just build a million gallon storage tank at roughly between $8 and $10 million, we chose to do a mini master plan on our solids process to make sure we did the right thing going forward. So we looked at all the different possibilities for our solids, looked at our capacity issues, our storage issues, and determined that the best path forward was to do a complete overhaul of our digesters. And in this process, would increase our capacity of our digesters, would decrease the amount of storage we would need by increasing the solids capacity of this process, and thereby saving roughly $10 million in the next 20 years for our solids handling process. So through this background, basically what we are asking to do is construct a new digestion facility, a new odor control system, modify our existing treatment facilities, and construct improvements to our electrical instrumentation and control equipment. All of this equipment is roughly 26 years old now and at the end of its life. So it, it is time. This process was going to start in 2014, 2015, but due to population growth being down, due to INI reduction in our systems, we have actually decreased load of the wastewater plant over the last 10 to 15 years through that INI program, which has helped with our solids process. So with this, we went out to bid, and we got three contracts, bid responses. JW Fowler was the lowest at 18.2 million, followed by Stellar J at 18.7, and then McClure &amp; Sons at 19.8. The lowest responsible bid was JW Fowler, and we are looking to award them the contract for the construction of this project. The bid result, bids came in a little higher than what the estimate was. We were, our engineering firm, Jacobs Engineering, estimated that it was going to be about $16.1 million to construct this project. That type of estimate, the range is negative 10% to plus 15% of their dollar figure. So, so the high range would have been 18.6 million. We came in a little under that. We were hoping for a little less, but we, because of supply issues, the nature of this business, contracts for wastewater plants in general are coming in much higher than expected. Another bid that just opened recently, they ended up at a 33% higher range than what the engineers estimate came in at. So we were, we actually were, were pleased that it came in as low as it did. I'm not usually used to talking up here too much, so.
You're doing a great job.
So one of the processes we had to go through, and as you see from your packet, is that we had to justify and make sure that JW Fowler was a responsive bidder. And through orders 279C dot 375, we worked with Walt to make sure we followed all the procedures and checklists in that ordinance to make sure that JW Fowler was a responsive bidder. And through that process, they did come out as being a responsive bidder. They have all the insurance requirements. They have multiple projects that have been done in this field and have experience doing this kind of work, from anywhere from $8 million projects to upwards of $33 million projects at different cities. One being tri-cities, which did a whole bunch of digester work as well as what we're doing here. With that, we recommend the award of the contract to JW Fowler for the 18.248 million, plus the authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract modification and change order in the amount of $900,000 for a total purchase of $19,128,000. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Do any members of council have any questions? Seems like no questions at this time. Good presentation, that means. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-21.
Madam Mayor, I would move.
And a second? I have, I have a motion from Councillor Mankey.
No.
I'll second.
And a second from Councillor Chenoweth.
That's experience getting to Zach.
I'm still jet lagged.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed say nay. The resolution has passed unanimously. Excellent. Thank you. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2023-24, a resolution of the City of McMinnville approving a collection rate increase not to exceed 4% for Recology, Inc. I would call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
Yes, good evening. So you all had a work session earlier this evening where three representatives of Recology were here discussing the work they've been doing and, and gave some information in terms of why the 4% increase is requested. So the resolution before you would increase rates for Recology by 4% starting July 1, 2023. They have met all of the administrative conditions required to move forward with this request. So on that basis, there's no reason not to be supportive. And then, in my review of the financial information as well, there, in the ordinance, there's a range of earnings that they are able to earn from our franchise. And the 4% increase actually doesn't quite get them to the lowest level. So if we were looking at the ordinance from the perspective of they need to earn at least the minimum amount, it actually would require a higher increase. But 4% is the cap each year for our solid waste franchises. So if you all have any questions for me, I think your, your options are to, to approve this, or if there's any other information that you need from Recology to be able to make your choice, we can do that. Or you can choose not to, not to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. We'll open this up for council discussion. And thank you for staying. And I appreciate you being here. And maybe you'll get a question? Does, yeah. Council President Garvin.
You guys mentioned that Coffin Buttes.
Do you want to come up and join us up here?
Costs is escalating, and they also are starting their potential expansion process. And we know how slow that can move and get remanded from Luba if they get opposition like it appears they might have. What, when we first went to that 10% rate adjustment a few years ago to take trash away from Riverbend, you guys committed to hauling it up to Washington. And what made you haul it down to Coffin Butte?
Coffin Butte. Why did we choose Coffin Butte? Is that
Yeah.
Councillor? I think it's probably the most proximate landfill for, for us to use. That's my guess. I'm sorry, I've only been with the company for three weeks, but I can get that information. I can probably text my boss and get that information. But I think it's probably the most proximate landfill.
Yeah, it is the closest landfill. But at the time, you guys said that you could haul it to Washington cheaper. And then in your report tonight, you mentioned that fuel costs came down. So that wouldn't mean transportation costs went up. So it's just not computing why we're filling our neighbor's landfill that's at near capacity, which is exactly what we tried to eliminate doing when we passed a 10% rate increase on to our current citizens.
Which I think, if I might add to that, I don't remember the exact timeframe that we were given, or the exact data we were given, but the capacity of the landfill, when we moved that through, the capacity of the landfill that you were going to haul, had, it was either 100 years or 150 years, but it was a, it was an immense amount of capacity.
We have Chris Carey on the phone, who probably.
Great.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Carey. Thank you.
Yeah. So I don't know the history as well from Dan, but as, I mean, I've been here a year and a half, and this was a few years ago. Dave has some of that knowledge, but my boss has that knowledge, but he's not available right now. I can get that back to you. But if there's interest in us not going to Coffin Butte, we certainly can address that. That, I mean, that'll take a little bit of time and probably, you know, if you wanted to go, I think you're probably thinking of Calhoun County Headquarters landfill in Washington. That's probably the next closest. But I'm more than likely on the same page with Dan, and it was a proximity question. But if you want to direct us to take it somewhere else, we can certainly, can certainly do that or look into that. And then look at rate implications to do that.
Mayor, members of the council, the council did receive at least a verbal report on this topic about three or four years ago from Chris's predecessor. And I think between reviewing the record and giving Chris the opportunity to, to work with his colleagues at Recology, we can report back and, and sort of reprise that information for you.
Okay. So I might pull this agenda item for now, then, and have it, can, do you think probably one month to bring it back reasonably?
Chris, do you think that works for you in terms of your internal review?
Are you, I mean, are you suggesting that we should change where we're taking it now for this review process? Because it won't happen that fast.
I'm, it's, you're a little difficult to hear. I think the ask is for additional information related to historical information the council has received about capacity and how that would affect our rate increases. When we did that last large rate increase, it was definitely with the understanding that there wouldn't be a rate increase for quite a bit of time. And so with this discrepancy about where our waste is being hauled, I think the, if, if I'm understanding Council President correctly, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're asking for additional information about how rates would be affected if the waste was still being hauled to the landfill that was identified when we approved the 10% rate increase. Is that clear?
Yes, I, I understand.
Wonderful. And we can also work with staff to get some specific questions in front of you. And then we'll bring this back in front of the council as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I think we can get that information probably more quickly than a month. I think a couple of weeks out, we should be able to provide that. There should be records of all of that, so.
And just for clarity, kind of where I was going with that, I wasn't going to kill your rate increase, but I didn't want to see a rate increase come back next year or the year after, and the reason being that you are now hauling trash further away than you are currently. Because when we initially went for that large rate increase, we were told it, it's so much because we're hauling it so far away. Most of that is transportation costs, I would imagine. So yes, there's wear and tear on equipment, and the cost of trucks aren't getting any cheaper. But I would imagine your, your highest cost is fuel and labor. So with fuel, I think you quoted that your fuel costs came down about 40%. It would seem feasible to still haul it north, unless there's some other reason.
Having the largest, the largest impact on our rate. Having the largest impact on our rate, because in front of you today is labor, for sure. I just wanted to give you a comprehensive picture of all the impacts with disposal being one of them.
And if I may, Chris, we don't have any intention to change the landfill that we are currently delivering solid waste to, right? So could you confirm that?
Yeah, this is the first time hearing of it. But like I said, if there's a direction or directive from McMinnville in terms of where they'd like us to send it, then we can, we can take a look at that and see what that looks like. But I, you know, Coffin Butte is the closest, the one in Washington that I think you're hoping of, is headquarters in Calhoun County, and it's probably further away. But I could check. So yeah, let us get back to you like you've asked on that. And that, you know, if it turns out there's information there that you guys would like us to lean into or go into a different direction, then we can, we can take a run at that.
Thank you. And City Manager Towery?
I'm not hearing a request to go a different direction, just to sort of fill in the blanks of history. Is that correct, Council President?
Correct. And just to kind of shore up, you know, that if slash when that landfill to our south, which is our closest proximity, you know, you guys can't haul there anymore because they have a trash situation like Riverbend did, from everybody now directing Riverbend's trash to their next nearest landfill. Our city ratepayers aren't going to be asked for another large rate increase. I mean, we've seen basically rate increase after rate increase after rate increase. And I get where you guys have also paused those a few times over, since we did do that vote. You're also operating at the lower end of your margin from the franchise agreement. But I don't think, in my time on council, we've ever put this trash collection back out to the open market and let other people bid on it either. So I'm just trying to be cognizant of what I hear from constituents about their trash bills and how they continually go up.
We can work to bring that information forward. I will remind the council, there were two other drivers to that large rate increase. One is the city was in the process of increasing its franchise fee on Recology, and we did that staged over about a twelve-month period. And at the council's request, Recology also established a residential styrofoam collection program. And those were a couple of the drivers for the year we had that large increase. But we'll reconvene all that information and give Chris's team the chance to put it in current context and bring it back to you.
Definitely appreciate the service you guys provide.
You do a great job.
Thank you so much. We'll now consider resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-grante agreement with Yamhill Community Action Partnership for pre-construction and construction reimbursement for applicable expenses incurred between July seventh, 2021, through June thirtieth, 2023, for the Any Door Place, a McMinnville Navigation Center. And I'll call on Community Development Director Heather Richards to present.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. So this is a sub-grante agreement for the Oregon Housing Community Services Grant that went to YCAP to support both the McMinnville Navigation Center and the Newburgh Navigation Center. This is for five hundred thousand dollars to be granted to the City of McMinnville directly to help offset pre-construction costs and construction costs that you'll see in your next resolution through June thirtieth, 2023. In addition to this five hundred thousand dollars that will come directly to the city, other funds in this grant to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars has also been used to purchase furniture and fixtures and equipment for the navigation centers. Those have been direct procurements from YCAP but funded with the same grants, grant funds.
Thank you. Any council discussion or questions? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-two.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Peralta. Councilor Mankey, would you like to second?
Yes.
And a second from Councilor Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. And we'll now consider resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign construction contracts with Fackler Construction Company for the construction of Any Door Place, a McMinnville Navigation Center. And I would call on our Community Development Director Heather Richards to present.
Sorry, Claudia has cut me off. She's done with my presentations for the evening. I neglected to say that Jody Christensen, our Special Projects Manager, is here as well, and she is our project manager for the navigation center. So if you have really tough questions, ask Jody. I'm here for the easy stuff. Anyway, so this is a resolution we're happy to bring to you. This is the resolution for the construction of the navigation center with a guaranteed maximum price. We gave you a presentation a couple of weeks ago that walked you through the history of this project and shared with you that we would be bringing this to you on May ninth, and we're happy to be here to do so. Just to remind everyone, the navigation center, which we call Any Door Place, is an emergency low-barrier shelter with onsite supportive services to help people who are experiencing houselessness and that, and in that way stabilize them so they can work towards achieving permanent shelter. The location is at three-two-seven and three-two-nine Southwest Adams Street. That is property that is owned by YCAP, who is a partner on this project. We are looking at doing a rehabilitation of the two existing structures and then building new construction in between them to connect them for a total of seventy, approximately seventy-five hundred square feet. This shows the site with the new construction connecting those two existing structures, and then also the steep topography associated with the site. And this shows how, some of the drawings as we were working through this on that, on that connection. It will have three aspects to this project. There are the left-hand side, the south side of the structure will have the emergency low-barrier shelter, and that's three floors, and will have thirty-six to thirty-seven beds. The middle side, the new construction, will be the day-use facility. And then the right-hand side, which is the north structure, will be offices for the supportive This shows the elevation of both the front and rear for this when it is complete. The new construction is meant to complement the two existing nineteen-twenty's bungalows, but also offset it with a new, modern look, so it's clear that it's new construction. And here are some images from that. We talked a little bit about how we got to this, this design perspective at that last So we came to you in 2021 and said it's a tough site. We're doing, we're connecting two buildings that are at different elevations, steep topography. We're going to recommend a construction manager, general contractor procurement process. You held a public hearing and gave us the authority to move forward with that particular procurement process. What that does is it brings a general contractor in early on the process to work with the architect and the design team and provide input as we're going through design so that they can do two things. Look at it from a constructability perspective and help value engineer the project, as well start putting together their bids for the project so we can save some time on the construction itself. It is a partnership with YCAP. We have an agreement with them where the city will manage the construction and build-out of the project, so we will get into an ownership position of construction and then assume all construction responsibility and risk. And those are the contracts in front of you tonight. And then when the certificate of occupancy is provided, we will transfer it to YCAP. YCAP will operate and own the structure after that. We have procured an architecture firm, FFA Architects. We procured them in 2022. We hired a Special Projects Manager in August of 22, Jody Christensen. And then we have procured our CMGC through a competitive process, Fackler Construction, at the end of 2022. This shows the project history thus far. We are now towards the end of sort of the design and procurement phases and getting to the fun phases, which is the construction and the contract with the contractor for what we call the guaranteed maximum price. So guaranteed maximum price is when the contractor says, comes in and says, I will build it for this, not to exceed price. And then as we work through the project, if there's savings based on how it's built and the subcontractor's costs and things of that nature, the savings comes back to the owner. That is part of your contract that's in front of you tonight. So the GMP is what we call the guaranteed maximum price. We have it divided into two phases. And the reason for that is because of the resolution you just adopted prior to this. We're separating out the phase that will be paid for by that OHCS grant so that we can keep our sort of accounting processes separate and clean. But the total GMP is two, two million four hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Phase one, which is from May tenth to June thirtieth, is comprised of site preparation as well as product procurement, especially product procurement that has long lead times or any product that we could procure in advance of construction. This will come in for building permits on May seventeenth. We expect it to go through plan review and be issued sometime towards the end of June, early July. Phase two is the actual construction of the project after the building permits are issued, and that's about two-point-two million dollars. And we expect to have this completed by May one of next year. In terms of the budget for resources and expenses, as you know, we received a grant from the state via Representative Noble for one-point-five million dollars. You also recently approved the ARPA funds to be used, five hundred thousand dollars of the City of McMinnville ARPA funds to be used for construction and/or administration. The OHCS grant, which you just approved from YCAP to come to the city, is for five hundred thousand. And recently, we went to the YCCO and asked, made a request for six-hundred-and-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and that's been approved to come to the city as well. So that's a total of three-point-one million dollars. The expenses that the city is responsible for, you see spelled out there, it's both architectural and engineering expenses, the GMP that I just described to you. We are carrying an owner's contingency on this, so both the contractor is carrying a contingency of five percent. In the contracts that you have in front of you, it talks about the process we'll go through to review how that contingency is spent. So anytime that there is a need for a change order or something like that, we'll be going into that contractor contingency for those funds. And then we're also carrying an additional contingency of five percent as an owner's contingency, just in case. So there's ten percent contingency, more or less, on this project. And then permits that are excluded from the guaranteed maximum price, you will see one of the exhibits to the contracts is the exclusions, and part of that is the structural permits and we anticipate, and the McMinnville Water and Light permits. And we anticipate those to be about sixty thousand dollars. We have been visiting with those two groups to understand those numbers, and we feel confident about that. So the total expenses is three-point-one million as well. There's a difference in there of about a hundred and sixty dollars of savings. So the contracts, these are different contracts for you. These are, we're building a building. We don't normally build buildings as a city. We build a lot of infrastructure and roads. So we're using, we're using what's called the AIA contracts. Those are the Association of Architects Contracts Form A-133 is the standardized CMGC contract for guaranteed maximum price. So there are several different documents associated with this. Walt Gal is our interim city attorney, has been working with us on these contracts and was familiar with them when I brought him to him to say, hey, can we use these? So the master contract is the Form A-133. We have made revisions to that for the city, and the contractor has accepted those. And then one of the larger revisions is we added supplemental conditions as well. Then the AIA Form A-133 has two exhibits. Exhibit A is where you put the guaranteed maximum price. You actually have two of those exhibit As to represent both phase one and phase two that I just described to you. And then those exhibit As have the five exhibits from the contractor that shows how he came up with that guaranteed maximum price. So there's a schedule of values for it, and he provided that schedule of values based on those two phases. So you can see what he's putting into the first phase and costing in there and what he's putting into the second phase. He also provided what he has as exclusion, so what he's not paying for. This plans and specs that he used for his GMP, and in this case, he used the ninety-five percent construction documents. So we feel pretty confident, he feels pretty confident with his numbers because of that. He provided his subcontractor directory and then his project schedule. Then there's an exhibit B to the master contract. That is the insurance and bonds exhibit. We took all of the insurance and bonds language that we use for our standardized construction contracts and put that in here as well to make sure we were protecting the city. And then we also asked the contractor to carry what we call builder's risk insurance. Typically, the owner carries that, but because we don't own the property, we've asked the contractor to do so, and he has agreed to do so. And then lastly, there is the general conditions associated with this particular AIA contract, and that's called AIA two-zero-one dash two-two-zero-zero-seven. It's referenced in the master contract, and we went through that as well. So all of these contracts have been reviewed by legal counsel. There's been amendments made in them based on what we felt needed to be there to protect the city. The contractor has reviewed all those and accepted them, and what you have in front of you is the final draft contract. After you approve these, I will go back into the AIA website and get finals from these draft contracts, and that's what we will have signed. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions from council for either Community Development Director Richards or Special Projects Manager Christensen? Any discussion? I want to take a moment to thank our city staff for their tireless work on this. This has been a huge effort, and I think you know how important it was that we met this deadline today of being able to sign this contract and the fact that we are sitting here and about to take a vote on it, which I am hopeful will go in the direction of signing the contract. I don't know the right word to describe it, but I am very proud of our team for their efforts to bring this to fruition. And I especially appreciated your slide with the timeline on it that then only had two more dates on of them, and one was groundbreaking, and then the other was ribbon cutting. That, that was my favorite slide.
Jody promised me it would be done. I'd be coming back for a ribbon cutting in three weeks, so that's great.
Well, thank you both very much. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Towery, for supporting this project, and to our Finance Director, Quayar. I know this has also been a lift on your department. It's just overall, this has been a tremendous effort, and we greatly, I greatly appreciate all of that effort. And so without any further discussion, I would ask for a resolution to approve, or I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-three.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Peralta.
Second.
And a second from Councilor Geary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, signify by saying nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Congratulations. All right. I will now move to ordinances. Tonight, we'll consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number five-one-three-two. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? Okay, we'll now consider the matter of ordinance number five-one-three-two. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim land use attorney, Mr. Bill Kabeisman, please read the ordinance by title only?
Good morning, Mayor. Ordinance number five-one-three-three, an ordinance including a zone map amendment to provide a flood area zone S-B to twenty-eight point two-five acres and the nine-thousand unit minimum lot size residential zone R-one to one-point-six-five acres and tax lot R-four-four-two-one dash zero-zero-nine-hundred and zero-twelve-hundred upon annexed commitments of the city loans.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? I would ask for a motion to pass ordinance number... I would ask for a motion to pass Ordinance Number 5132 to a second reading.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councillor Geary and a second from Councillor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Ordinance Number 532 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will again ask our interim land use attorney, Bill Kabeisman, to read the ordinance again by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 5132, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to apply the flood area zone FG to 28.25 acres and the 9,000 minimum lotsized residential zone R1 to 1.65 acres of tax lot R4421-00900 and 01200 upon annexing into the city lands.
Thank you. I'll now ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5132.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councillor Geary and a second from Councillor Peralta. I'll ask our city recorder, recorder to poll the council.
Councillor Geary?
Aye.
Councillor Menke?
Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin?
Aye.
And Ordinance Number 5132 is adopted unanimously. We'll now consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance Number 5133. Does any councillor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves from this ordinance? We'll now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5133. Does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will our interim land use attorney, Bill Kabeisman, please read the ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Number 5133, an ordinance annexing to the city of McMinnville, tax lot R4421-00900 and R4421-01200.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? I'll ask for a motion to pass Ordinance Number 5133 to a second reading.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councillor Geary and a second from Councillor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed by saying nay. Ordinance Number 5133 has passed unanimously on its first reading. I'll again ask our interim land use attorney, Bill Kabeisman, to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance Number 5133, an ordinance annexing to the city of McMinnville, tax lot R4421-00900 and R4421-01200.
I'll now ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5133.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councillor Chenoweth. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a second from Councillor, Council President Garvin. All of those, and I would ask our city recorder to poll the council.
Councillor Geary?
Aye.
Councillor Menke?
Aye.
Councillor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Councillor Peralta? Council President Garvin?
Aye.
And the ordinance Number 5133 has been adopted unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you all for your service. I will adjourn the council meeting at 8:30 PM.